Good evening, everyone. I now call the board meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Present.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Present.
Dr. Mason?
Present. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Mark Snow, who's a 4th grade student at Patrick Elementary, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance... Oh, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to come back to the podium, Mr. Snow, and you have something to share with us for our opening this evening?
Yes, I have a poem called "Am High to the Sky" by James McDonald. "Am high to the sky in all that you do, because you just never know what it takes to be you. Be strong and be brave, but at the same time, be kind and always be sure that you are using your mind."
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I love that "be kind" part. That's something I think is a lost art in our society today. So it's always great to hear someone say, "Be kind to one another." So tell us a little bit about yourself. What's your favorite subject?
Math.
Math. Okay, good, good. And tell me what type of career you want to do when you grow up?
I actually have three.
Three? Okay.
I'd like to either be an artist, an archaeologist, or a content creator.
Awesome, awesome. And I see how possibly all three of those things could be woven in together. Exactly, Disney. Exactly. Sounds like a movie in the making to me. So tell us, who do you have here with you tonight?
I have my principal, Dr. Plink, and I have my grandma.
Yes, yes, thank you. We can get you all to stand up and be recognized. Well, thank you all for sharing Mark with us. It's greatly appreciated. And Dr. Plink, it's always good to see you. Thank you for all that you do. All right. Any comments from board members? All right. Thank you very much. So moving along, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second?
It's been properly moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we adopt tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving along, the next item on the agenda is tonight's consent agenda. 2.01 Personnel Report 23-07, 2.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March 15, 2023, 2.03 Certification of the Closed Session of March 15, 2023, and 2.04 Release from Compulsory Education Religious Exemption. What's the pleasure of the board? Remove that we adopt? Or approve?
Second.
It's been moved that we approve tonight's consent agenda by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we move along to the superintendent and staff reports. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair and members of the school board. This evening, Ms. Brittany Branch will share with you updates to the FY 2023-2024 budget. As you're aware, this budget enables the school board to remain committed to the goals of the strategic plan. It clearly focuses on supporting our core business of teaching and learning, especially the goal of attracting, developing, and retaining exceptional staff. Hence, this budget is human resource-centric. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Branch for the update.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, and the Hampton community. Tonight or this evening, I do have an update as it pertains to our local contribution for the fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed budget. This budget recommendation that is before the school board tonight, it does continue to include the 5% raise with no increase to healthcare premiums for employees, also 1% bonus, additional staffing, and teacher and support staff salary adjustments. The local contribution from the city of Hampton, it is accounted for within our Fund 50, or the School Operating Fund. And the revision that we received is $91.2 million. This is an increase of a little over $501,000 as compared to the March 15 presentation last week. This projection is still an estimate because it is still subject to final city council approval. But with this projected increase, we are providing an additional recommendation to place these funds into contingency for one-time school projects. And also, this will help put the division in a better place based on the final results from the state budget as well. So that does conclude tonight's update, and we do not have any other recommendations. So before the school board is the vote tonight, and then also, if there are any additional changes, once we do get the state budget, those will be communicated and presented back to the school board along with the associated impacts. And open for any questions.
Any questions from board members? Or comments? Dr. Banks Gray has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I actually spoke to Ms. Branch today, and I just wanted to let her know that budget cycles, in my experience, have been just always a daunting task. But when I tell you I'm so excited to be in the midst of this, and just hats off to you and your finance team, and you just can't find a more dynamic and skillful team around here at all. And I got so excited that, y'all, I actually jot down some highlights and some takeaways from this proposed budget. So I just want to share those with you guys because I just got so excited about it. So I just wanted to highlight that in an environment where you see so many districts and divisions that are having shortfalls and shortages, it is so refreshing to see that you all continue to strengthen compensation and keeping that the forefront of this budget. And the fact that you've been so strategic, although we look at the budget and you forecast it and you plan it out annually, to keep your eye on years beyond, to make it make sense that that's going to impact other issues and, excuse me, and other decisions further down the road, that's so key for me. Another thing that I want to point out that you guys keep in mind is the successful collaborations. And that's throughout the budget process with the division leadership across departments, our school board, and the phenomenal partnership that we have with Hampton City Council. That just speaks volumes to me. And the actual process, and y'all can tell my excitement, I'm so excited about this, but the process is everything. The way that it's developed, the way that it's streamlined, and how you stick to it, and the level of transparency is just like no other. And there is no doubt, when you peel back all the numbers, what it says to me is that Hampton City Schools cares, and I support the budget 100%, and I appreciate your transparency and your hard work. Kudos to you all.
Thank you.
And I would certainly like to add to that the one thing that really stands out for me in this budget is how equitable this budget is, especially as we look at the compensation part for our faculty and staff. I was approached by a teacher in the grocery store. Now, mind you, of course, I was trying to buy my groceries and get out, but, you know, I was approached by a teacher who really wanted to say thank you, simply because they saw that we were looking at the teacher scale across the board, and we made sure that it was done equitably across the board for all teachers. In addition, they were able to see that they were going to get the compensation, the additional 5% compensation. And the teacher actually mentioned the additional days as they saw the new school calendar for next year. So they do recognize all of the things that we are doing in order to work with our teachers, looking at the mental health things that have been put in place and all as well. And so it was just refreshing to hear someone say, "Thank you." So when we look at what the division leadership team is doing, you know, the support of this board, I want to say thank you to you all because it really is a daunting task of putting this all together, making sure that we are still keeping the main thing, and that's putting our children first, but also making sure that we're taking care of our teachers and staff. So, great job. Kudos to the board members and also to the division leadership team for a long and challenging, but a successful budget cycle because what I see here is truly a balanced budget. And I can't give kudos without saying thank you to city council, who are in a meeting now as well, but just saying thank you for all of their support in supporting Hampton City Schools and the work that we're doing for our children every day. Anyone else? Comments? Okay.
That concludes superintendent's update. Thank you, Ms. Branch and members of the board for your remarks.
All right. Next up is item four. So I'll give it back to you, Dr. Smith.
Absolutely.
Reference to 4.01, the one-time bonus recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so you will note that, Mr. Chair and members of the board, that as a part of your agenda, there are two other decision points. One, in particular with deliberation, we have included, as a part of your deliberation, a recommendation for a one-time bonus for all current full and part-time employees who have a start date on or before March 22 of 2023. If approved, full-time employees will receive an after-tax bonus of $2,000, and part-time employees will receive an after-tax bonus of $1,000. The bonus will be paid on April 26 of 2023. We certainly believe that this one-time bonus aligns with one of the key goals of the school board's 2021-2026 strategic plan to attract, develop, and to retain exceptional staff. Most importantly, this one-time bonus expresses a heartfelt thank you for your ongoing commitment in terms of our staff and their dedication and support as we continue to work together to ensure academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And so after your deliberation, if it is the pleasure of the board, we're requesting that you move this particular item to action. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board for the opportunity to make remarks prior to the deliberation.
Thank you very much. Any comments from board members on item number four?
I just make a motion that we move this item to action.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Samuels that we move item 4.01, FY 2022-2023 One-Time Bonus Recommendation, to items for action, which would make that 5.03, and was seconded by Ms. Afanjah. Any discussion from board members? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chair, one final comment, and that is, we have updated the student fees to reflect the FY 2024 out-of-district tuition rate, which is recommended to be, I think, at $2,096.
Yes, and we did see that. So the next item on the agenda is item for action, 5.01, the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, 5.02 Student Fees for 2023-2024, and new item 5.03 Fiscal Year 2022-2023 One-Time Bonus Recommendation. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item 5.01.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve action item 5.01 Superintendent's Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Any discussion?
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Cherry.
Ms. Chair?
Yes. I just wanted to say that as part of this budget, and having worked with the division leadership team for 17 years as we put budgets together in what we call the war room, I mean, it went on and on and on, but one of the key things and the hardest thing to do was to not only just give a bonus, not only to give a raise, but not to increase the health insurance. And to have that part of this budget speaks volumes because many times, we would give increases, but they had to turn around and use it for health insurance. And that's amazing here in 2023 that our employees will not be hit with an increase. So I just want to say a special thank you for that because I know there are a lot of dominoes that can fall when you get to that piece. And I'm looking at people I've worked with for 10, 13 years over there now who made those kinds of commitments to this division. I remember many days Ann Bane was pulling her hair out, but we got it done, Ann. And I just want to say thank you because I know what it's like to be a part of the division leadership team. I know that everybody's on the same page, but it's hard getting there because everybody has a different pie in the oven, if you will. But at the end of the day, when it comes to Hampton City Schools, the smorgasbord works. So I just want to thank you guys.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Dr. Mason. And I just want to, you know, thank the superintendent and his staff for, you know, providing the board with a balanced budget, which include all these amenities and all these salary increase and bonuses for a teacher. But I would like to also make it a point that each year, the board meets with the superintendent, and we have several priorities and goals. And each year since I've been on the school board, staff salary has been one of our main goals and initiative that we really want to make sure that our staff and teachers and so forth are adequately compensated. And so it is not just a budget priority. This is also a board priority. And this year, we are able to move forward to ensuring that we get a bonus and a suitable raise for our staff.
Anyone else? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, I have a statement to read. As a member of the school board of the city of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the FY 2023 to 2024 School Operating Budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the remaining items, 5.02 and 5.03. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item 5.02.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore that we approve 5.02 and seconded by Ms. Afanjah. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. And the last item under action, item 5.03 Fiscal Year 2022-2023 One-Time Bonus Recommendation. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve action item 5.03 One-Time Bonus.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cherry to approve action item 5.03 and seconded by Ms. Afanjah. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, I have a statement. As a member of the school board of the city of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the FY 2022-2023 Bonus Recommendation because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on the recommendation fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. The next item is item number six on the agenda, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentation of Any Written Communications or Petition. And we do have one. So I will ask Ms. Bowers to please read the protocol.
Okay. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. A superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. And our speaker this evening is Ms. Gloria Presley.
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Presley. I live at Tufanwick Boulevard in Hampton, Virginia, at the Chamberlain. The most gorgeous suite, 814. I'd like to thank all of you, especially the superintendent, because you did send me a cumulative record in writing of the activities that you have prepared and done for me on the request to acknowledge and appreciate teachers who integrated the Hampton schools. When I was here the last time, I made an effort to give you a chronology of what happened that led up to our selection. So I won't go over that. And I was about to tell you about the 26 of us when my time was called. So I'd like to just start with that tonight. I want you to know that we carried the burdens, and there were many of them, not only going into a new environment of our professional life, but having to leave families, students, and citizens who had depended on us for all of the times that we had been in our own schools. There were 26 of us. Two were placed in each of the 13 formerly all-white elementary schools. We were admonished very highly not to speak anything to anyone, our churches, our organizations, or any of our associates, to let them know that we had been selected and that never tell where you're going. Well, we couldn't do that because we didn't know where we were going. When the superintendent, then Mr. Lindsey, C. Alton Lindsey, called us in to congratulate us and tell us, you know, all the fine things that he knew about us, there were two things in particular that I noticed. First of all, I was truly the youngest person there. And of the 26 of us, I was the only one that looked like I was colored. The teachers that had been selected all looked like white ladies. Those were the two things that I noticed right away. Then he began to tell us that we had been vetted for two years. And we couldn't believe that. Well, the school board, under the direction of, at the time, the Honorable Late Hunterby Andrews and the Honorable Late William Mason Cooper, had been, and Mary Johnson, Mrs. Mary Johnson, who was at the time the elementary school supervisor for our schools, for the colored schools. They had been in the process of going in and out of our schools. They knew everything. They knew that those of us who had perfect attendance, they knew that we dressed like we were professionals. They knew that we had studied abroad. They knew that we had years in the system. I ended up with over 45, but at the time, I only had about eight years. But mostly the other ladies had been there, at least, I think, about 15 or 20 years. They're all deceased now. I'm the last one. And I'm here to have you to really consider, really consider acknowledging the historical element. This is National Women's Month, and it's going to be my last opportunity with you to ask you to please give it your God-given thought and attention. We need to be acknowledged. We have parents, family, friends who knew these people. You can find them. If you could tell the history museum in Hampton that there were 26 of us, and Gloria Presley is the only one alive, so you need to get in touch with her, you know some things you're not telling us. It's just as secretive now as it was then. But it's time now. It's time now. The cancel culture is over. I think it started long before we're right now in it. Please, give it your attention. I want to see and hear that you are excited, as you have been, by all the things I mentioned to you before, all of the pieces to the puzzle where you could get that information. I've been monitoring your channel for information on Channel 46. Yes. I have not seen anything asking the public to have any input on identifying these people, these very fine women who integrated the school system. We carried, we carried the burden, the burden that our families and our schools, our children, they felt that we had deserted them, that we had left them. We had no choice. Then too, we didn't know where we were going. We didn't know where we were going to be assigned. And at that time, there were areas in Hampton that were very negative to us, and we didn't want to go into them. Only two things that I asked when I was selected, after we'd been selected. I wanted to be near my home because I basically had four young children at the time.[1742.48] Also, I was able to walk to school most days. Students waited with me. They walked with me in the mornings. They came to my house to be tutored. And not only mine, but all of us did that with our children, all 16 of us, 26 of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'd like to know, are there any questions I can answer for you?
Well, during public comment, we can't ask any questions or even comment on what you've said. But thank you for part two, and there's going to be a part three. We'll see you at the next meeting also. All right?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I expect to hear something soon.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number seven. Information, 7.01 Next Meetings. The next work session will be held at 6:30 p.m. on April 19 at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. And a closed session will be held at noon on that same day in reference to our superintendent's search. The next regular meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. on May 3, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School at 6:30 p.m.